Good evening, and I welcome you to the Pitt County Board of Commissioners December 6th meeting. Again, welcome to all who are watching via livestream or here in person. Thank you. And I now call the Pitt County Board of Commissioners to order. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Fitzpatrick.
Here.
Commissioner Albright.
Here.
Commissioner Coulson.
Here.
Commissioner McGloughorn.
Here.
Commissioner Nunley.
Here.
Commissioner Ward.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Here.
Everyone is present.
Thank you. We will have invocation by Commissioner White and the pledge by Commissioner Nunley.
Heavenly Father, thank you for today and all the blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Thank you for the privilege to live in Pitt County, dear Lord, and be with us at this meeting and give us ears to listen fully and give us the wisdom to make the right decisions tonight. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we will have election of officers for the Pitt County Board of County Commissioners, and at this time, I will turn it over to our attorney, Attorney James Scavell.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'll just briefly state from the rules of procedure, the process that we will follow for the election of Chair and Vice Chair this evening. Reading from your rules on Page 6, "The board shall elect a chairman and vice chairman from among its members, who shall then immediately assume those positions for the ensuing year. Any commissioner may nominate any other commissioner for chairman, or may nominate the current chairman or vice chairman for a second term. Nominations do not require a second. It is not necessary to open or close nominations by motion. Once all commissioners have had an opportunity to make a nomination, the board shall vote with the last nominee being voted on first, and continuing in reverse order. A supermajority vote of the entire board is necessary to elect the current chairman or vice chair for a second term; otherwise, a simple majority is required. Only two consecutive terms as chairman are allowed. The title chairman and vice chairman shall refer to persons who hold those positions, whether male or female." Are there any questions about the process before we begin? Seeing none, I will open the floor for nominations for the position of Chair.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Vice Chair Mike Fitzpatrick.
I second it. Madam.
Are there other nominations?
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Attorney.
Yes.
I would like to nominate Chris Nunley.
Are there other nominations? Hearing none, I'll close the floor for nominations, and we will vote in reverse order. So we'll start, and we'll have to do it by roll call vote because the meeting was noticed as virtual. So those, this vote will be in favor of Chris Nunley for Chair. Madam Clerk. Chairwoman Anne Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Fitzpatrick.
No.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
No.
Commissioner McGloughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
No.
Commissioner White.
No.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
No.
Motion fails five to four. Then we will proceed to Mike Fitzpatrick. Madam Clerk. Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
No.
Vice Chairman Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner McGloughorn.
No.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes seven to two. Okay. Congratulations to Chairman Fitzpatrick. Moving on to the position of Vice Chair, I will now open the floor for nominations for the position of Vice Chair.
Madam Attorney, I would like to nominate Beth Ward for Vice Chair.
Okay. Are there other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Alex Albright.
Are there other nominations?
Move nominations to be closed.
Okay. Hearing none, we will close nominations, and we will vote in reverse order for Vice Chair, the first candidate being Alex Albright. Madam Clerk. Chairwoman Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Fitzpatrick.
No.
Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
No.
Commissioner McGloughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
No.
Commissioner White.
No.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams. Motion passes five to four. And we do not need to move forward. Congratulations to Commissioner Albright as Vice Chair. With that, we will take a brief recess to rearrange our seating. Thank you.
At this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Some moved here.
Second.
We have, it's been properly moved in second. Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright.
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson.
Yes.
Commissioner Anne Floyd Huggins.
Yes.
Commissioner McGloughorn.
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley.
Yes.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now move to the presentation of the county's audited financial statements for year ended June 30th, 2021.
Hi, good evening. My name is Tanya Thompson. I'm an audit manager with Martin Starnes and Associates, the audit manager for Pitt County this year, and I'm here tonight to present to you the audit results and some key performance financial information for the year ended June 30th, 2021. Just some overview of the results of our audit is that we did issue an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion. It means that, in our opinion, we feel like the financial statements of the county are presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. We did work closely with the Finance Department, with Brian and Chris and others in the Finance Department, as well as DSS and Health, and are pleased to say that staff were cooperative in assisting with completing the audit. The audit was submitted timely. The official due date is 10/31, but the LGC extends that due date to 12/1. The financial statements are in review with the LGC, and they will be hopefully approved in the next few weeks, and you'll have some hard copies that you can review. I do want to report that there were no material weaknesses in internal controls over financial reporting noted. I would also like to take just a moment to say that the Pitt County Development Commission was also audited this year, and per LGC rules, I am required to present the audit for them as well. That audit has been completed, reviewed, and approved by the LGC, and that entity will no longer have any audits going forward because it will now be part of the general fund of So one of the most important factors that the LGC and other users of the financial statement look at when they're talking about local government finances is the fund balance. So the total fund balance of Pitt County at the end of June 30th, 2021, was $60,663,000. Now, if you look at that another way, available fund balance means the fund balance that you had at the end of the year that's available to you the next year, and that's a statutory calculation which backs out your non-spendable and your stabilization by state statute. That number is mostly made up of receivables, things that you don't have in your hand, you can't spend it because you don't have it in your hand yet, even though it's part of your fund balance. And that number for Pitt County at June 30th, 2021, was a little over $52 million. If you compare that to your fund, available fund balance of 2020, at $33.4 million, you had an increase in your available fund balance of $18.8 million. Now, that is just a factor of your bottom line increasing. So another way to look at fund balance is as a percentage of your expenditures. So here we have a three-year comparison from 19, 20, and 21. You can see the total fund balance went from just under $29 million to $33.4 million to $52.2 million this year. And that percentage of your expenditures over those years went from 19.6% to 21.4% to 33.2%. So the LGC in past, I'm sure everyone has heard that 8% rule, 8% of fund balance is one month of expenditures. They've actually revised their guidance this year and are recommending that units that have more than $10 million of expenditures, which you fall into that category, have a minimum fund balance of 25%. So that would be your target going forward, would be at least 25%. Now, I know with this increase that there were some amounts that have already been appropriated out of that fund balance that you had available to use during your FY22 Next, we have some summaries of your major expenditures and revenues. This chart shows you the general fund revenues and expenditures for the last three years, and you can see from 21, or from 20 to 21, your revenues increased almost $16 million from $154 million to over $170 million. At the same time, your expenditures decreased quite a bit from, well, about $2.2 million. And we'll talk about some of the specifics that make up those in future slides. So the major revenue categories of your general fund are ad valorem taxes, they make up 60%. Your restricted intergovernmental revenues, federal and state grants, those make up 15%. And your other taxes and licenses are 17%. That's mostly your local option sales tax. Those top three sources of revenue make up 92% of your total revenue. And we'll look a little closer at each one of those major categories of revenue, starting with ad valorem taxes. From 20, from 19 to 20, you had an increase, and from 20 to 21, you had another increase of $6.2 million, that's 7%. The main factor of that was the 2020 revaluation, which hit in 2021. The property values, based on that revaluation, increased by 11.6%. The property tax rate, however, was lowered by 4.13 cents, so the net of those two effectively had an increase of 7% in your ad valorem tax revenue. Your other taxes and licenses, again, this is mostly your local option sales tax, increased by $5 million this year, which was about 22%. There was an increase across the state in the state shared revenue, kind of an unexpected consequence of the pandemic, people staying at home, traveling out of state less, spending more money in the county. And finally, your restricted intergovernmental revenues, those increased this year by about $2 million, or 8.4%. Most of that increase was in your Department of Social Services, and that includes some specific COVID-19 pandemic relief funds. Okay, on to your expenditures in your general fund. Your top three categories here are public safety at 26%, education at 34%, and human services at 26%. Those three combined are 100, almost 126 million out of your 145 million budget. That other category of 14% encompasses general government, environmental protection, economic and physical development, cultural recreation, and your debt service. So to look at those top three categories each a little more closely, you can see your public safety expenditures were fairly consistent from the prior year, an increase of about $1.2 million or 3%. Your human service expenditures increased, actually decreased, I'm sorry, by $1.3 million And then your education expenditures increased $1.5 million or 3%. Your education expenditures do include both your public schools and your community college That's it for the general fund. Lastly, I want to cover some key performance indicators for your solid waste fund. The quick ratio is a number that the LGC is looking at very closely for any enterprise funds. They want that number to be at least one, which means you at least have enough current assets on hand to cover your current liabilities. And as you can see, your current ratio from 20 to 21 was 1.29% and, or 1.29 and 1.25. Your cash flows in the solid waste, we're looking at cash flows from operations, how much you're collecting from customers, and how much of your operating costs are covered by that. And you did have positive cash flows from operations of $990,000 compared to $372,000 last year. There was a significant increase in the contractual costs to operate, and also a related increase in those fees in FY21. Another way to look at this, that the LGC looks at it, is to make sure that you have enough left over from your cash from operations to pay your debt service. So if we back out that debt service, you still have positive cash flows in the solid That's all the financial information that I have for you, but I do have some general performance information. The LGC this year has implemented some new regulations that, one, require me to present this information to you, although we've always done that. But they have some specific performance indicators that they're looking at, and those things specifically that they want us to communicate to you. And one of those things which is going to require a response from the board back to the LGC is a statutory violation that was reported in the footnotes. This did not require a finding. The implementation of new accounting guidance during the year caused certain funds to be moved into the general fund that had not been budgeted. Technically, that expenditure which was not budgeted being reported in the general fund is a statutory violation. So a response will be required in writing within 60 days of this presentation, and Brian will work with you on that. So some other performance indicators that the LGC is looking at, they're looking at your fund balance available percentage, which we've covered, your quick ratios, which we've covered, the fact that you've submitted your audit in a timely manner, and the fact that you have a stable property tax valuation and collection percentage. All of those were green flags. And that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions that anyone has.
Seeing no questions, thank you very much for your presentation.
All right, thank you for your time.
Mr. Manager, do we have any public addresses to the board?
Yes, sir. We have one person signed up. We have Robert Murray with the County Attorney. We'll read our statement on public address of the board. We'll ask Mr. Murray then to come forward afterwards.
Yes, Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address. I will keep your time at three minutes per speaker.
Okay, my name is Robert Murray. Address is 4961 Short Point Road. Basically, the reason I'm here tonight is because there's a, Pitt County says that they cannot regulate turkey shoots. They cannot basically do anything with them. The second part of it is that I've been told not to have, that Sheriff's Office would not enforce the north ordinance. It comes from that either. The first thing that comes to light is, yes, it's been there, they've been doing it for 20 years at that address, but for the last three, it was known that they weren't going to do any more turkey shoots. And then they brought it back in this year. The only reason I placed a home on that location is because there was not going to be any more turkey shoots. Now, they did have two this year, and you can hear every shotgun blast inside the home. You can tell who's winning, you can tell what lane they shoot on. And some of these guns, they shoot at what I call land cannons. That being said, the average shotgun blast is 150 decibels. I was a law enforcement officer for many years, and I spent a long time on firing ranges. My home sits 100 feet from where they're shooting these firearms off at, and it is put where the county setback said it had to be. If I'd have had my choice and known that they were going to revisit turkey shoots, I wouldn't have never put a home there. However, I did put a home there with the knowledge they weren't going to have them again. Now, I'm not saying they shouldn't have turkey shoots, I'm saying they need to have them in a place that's not a residential section. I visit the State House, they have theirs in the middle of a field away from houses, and I commend them for that because the nearest house is across the four-lane highway. Mine sits 100 feet from where they shoot, and I'm told there's nothing to keep done about it. Times change. Yes, they did it for 20 years there. Times have changed. It doesn't mean that that turkey shoot has to stay at that one location. They can change where it sat. Now, I'm not against the turkey shoot, I think they're good fundraisers if they're held in the right locations, but not next to people's residential properties. I was the chief of that department for a long time, and they voted twice not to have turkey shoots, and they revisit it and bring it back every time. This is not a Second Amendment right that we're talking about, and this is not, this is a general quality of life statement that has to go along with this. It is the only turkey shoot in this part of eastern North Carolina that has a turkey shoot next to occupied properties.
Please continue. Thank you.
If we could now move on to the Public Health Director's update. Dr. Silvenow.
Good evening, Commissioners. Good evening, Mr. Manager, Madam Attorney. Manager asked me to provide a brief COVID-19 update for you this evening, especially with the appearance of the so-called Omicron variant. So the Omicron variant was first reported publicly on November 26th, 2021. Variant was identified by the South African sequencing program. There's a couple of different countries in Africa that were actually found to have the variant in it at the time. Since its identification, many countries around the world have identified the variant in their sequencing programs, including the U.S., which now has probably six or seven states that are, that are known to have Omicron cases in them. So far, the Omicron variant has not been identified in North Carolina. Sequencing the virus, you may say, well, how do we know that this thing is out there? How does this work? There are many programs across the country and around the world that are sequencing or looking at the genetic material of the COVID-19 virus. The sequencing is an automated process, it's a computerized instrumental process. So once a sequence is identified as a variant, it can be shared with other sequencing instruments so that they can look for that sequence in the virus's genetic material. We're fortunate here in Greenville and Pitt County in eastern North Carolina have the Brody slash Biden Health have an active sequencing program, sequencing lab here in eastern North Carolina. As of the last report last week that came out of the program, the Omicron variant of COVID-19 had not been identified in eastern North Carolina. Delta has been the only variant identified for the past 16 weeks, maybe 17 when that report comes out tomorrow morning, but so far, no Omicron. And the Brody lab will be able to identify the Omicron variant if or when it appears in eastern North Carolina. Transmissibility, the Omicron variant is thought to be more transmissible than the Delta variant. There is maybe some question about that, but overall, I think most people are leaning that this is more transmissible than the Delta variant. The clinical syndrome produced by this variant seems to be fairly mild. Cases reported short-lived, generalized muscle or body aches as the predominant symptom, and cases were managed in the outpatient setting, meaning these individuals were not hospitalized because of their illness. Here's a look at the weekly sequencing report. This is the report that came out last week. It always comes out on Tuesday morning, so I'm sorry, you guys always get to see last week's report when I come, but it comes out on Tuesday morning, and for the past 16 weeks, it's been all Delta in eastern North Carolina, and really around the country, all Delta across most of the country. Wanted to just take a second and show you our epidemic curve. This is a report I get every week from the State Health Department, from their data stream that shows our epidemic curve to date. This is a week-to-week epidemic curve, and this one happens to break it out by race. Just to show you, the slate blue represent cases among whites or Caucasians, the red are African-Americans or blacks, this purple or lavender color are Hispanics. There's a tiny little bit at the bottom here, you'll see that are American Indians or Native Alaskans. And then this mint, I like to think of mint chocolate chip, I guess, color here, one of my favorite ice creams, my granddaughter's favorite ice cream too, by the way. Our folks who identify as other, and we see that where there's large number of younger folks, so we saw that in the ECU spike of last summer, summer 2020. We saw a little bit of that in the January spike earlier this year, and certainly, we saw that at the height of the Delta wave where many young folks are identifying as mixed-racial or polyracial, and that comes up as this sort of mint-chocolate-chip colored bar in the graph. Overall, we've fallen, we're clearly on the backside of the Delta wave. On a week-to-week basis, we have still continued to come down since Thanksgiving. Our numbers are trending up. I'll show you that next. This is our daily, sort of the daily data run that I do, looking at our data every day. Over the past 14 cases, we're up to 455. Before Thanksgiving, we were down in the lower 200s cases, so we're at about 32 and a half cases per day in the county that is increasing at this time. Cases per thousand, I think for local folks, it's easier to understand 1,000 people, and so right now, for every 1,000 people in Pitt County, we know there's about two and a half folks who have COVID across the county. Our total cases to date, meaning folks who have had either a positive PCR test or a positive antigen test in Pitt County is 30,711. That represents 16.6% of Pitt County residents using 185,000 as the Pitt County population. I know that number's a little high per the census, but that's where we started with an estimate where we thought we would be before the census came out, so I've continued to use that number. We would estimate that 30,110 of those cases are recovered as a percentage, that's 98% of our COVID cases in the county would meet the conditions of recovery as a time-based recovery, meaning 14 or more days from diagnosis and still alive. We know that in some cases, that overestimates recovery, in some cases, it underestimates recovery, but we feel like that's a fair measure. If you're alive 14 days after contracting the virus, you've likely cleared that virus from your system. You may still have symptoms, but you're at least not infectious anymore. So that's how we've defined recovery in our calculations. We are stable at 146 fatalities. Not to belittle that number, initial calculations suggested that that number may be much, much higher by this point in time. When we looked at this originally in 2020, and we thought this might have a 3% or 4% fatality, that puts the case fatalities, if 100% of our citizens were infected, somewhere it's between 6,000 and 8,000 folks. So, you know, it's, it's a much lower number than we would have anticipated based on some of our earlier estimates of case fatality with the virus. Our case fatality rate overall, unadjusted, is 0.5. For comparison, that's about five times the unadjusted flu case fatality For comparison, that's about five times the unadjusted flu case fatality rate, which is generally reported, is 0.1. And our percent positivity today was 7.1, which is increasing. We know with the original strain of the virus that for every case we counted, there were about two and a half cases out there. And that comes from blood test data or what we call seroprevalence data. When the state and the county were at 10% of our folks having tested positive by PCR or antigen, the antibody surveillance was showing that 25% of our population had antibodies. So, that's where that conversion factor comes from. It's likely with Delta that that number is higher. The number with Delta may be somewhere between 4 to 6, maybe even 4 to 7 per case that we've counted. So, making a relatively conservative adjustment of our cases, that two and a half times factor, we would have 76,778 cases, which is about 41%, 41 and a half% of the Pitt County residents having had COVID, whether they know it or not, perhaps even more. And that would take our case fatality rate down to 0.2, so only about twice as infectious as influenza, and that would be one death in every 500 people. So, 500 cases. So, I think far better than we had thought early on in the, in the COVID outbreak. Want to briefly review our vaccine data with you. As of today, 97,000, 97 individuals in the county have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. That's 54% of county residents fully vaccinated, 90,805 Pitt County residents, or 50% of the county has been fully vaccinated. And as you're well aware, children between the ages of 5 and 11 were, became eligible for vaccination the first week of November. And already, we are up to 11% of the 5 to, 5 to 11-year-old age group being vaccinated in Pitt County. So, I think that's a good thing from the standpoint of vaccinations across the county. I think that's my last slide for you. So, happy to take any questions that, that you all have.
Dr. Silverneal, is there any way that you can tell about the increases that we're seeing on this chart? Or it's just, just happened and you just have to report it? But there is a cause or whatever that you can determine?
In, in terms of the increased number of cases, Commissioner?
Yes.
Well, we, we would think that that is likely due to socialization from the Thanksgiving holiday. We had had a brief bump the week before Thanksgiving. We were down the first couple of days, the week of Thanksgiving. We've been up consistently every day since Thanksgiving. So, we think that that is likely due to people traveling and intermingling at Thanksgiving, not necessarily a change in the virus per se. It's, it's a change in human activity.
So, we may get a bigger bump Christmas?
Yeah, we, this would normally be the time of year where we would be riding, the influenza wave would be climbing towards its January peak. Last year, we saw COVID climb to its January peak, basically on the same trajectory that we would see flu climb. The COVID curve for last year looked very similar to a typical influenza curve. So, I would expect that the current activity is going to continue to rise, peaking probably in mid-January, and then falling off as it does in most respiratory seasons.
No recommendations?
Nothing other than what we're doing right now. Yes, get your vaccine if you're not vaccinated, get your booster if you're not, haven't had the booster.
Any problem?
But yeah, there are some treatments on the market, some potential oral agents on the market, not quite FDA-approved yet. Those may come in as a mitigation member, but not necessarily as a preventive measure, although there may be some use for them as a preventive measure as well.
One last question, since I've gotten some calls about self-test. Do you think it's coming back or is there going to be a possibility?
For at-home tests, there are at-home tests available commercially. We have been trying to secure additional, an additional supply of home tests that we could distribute. We did receive some from the Department of Defense, but then several lot numbers within that group were recalled, leaving many of them, you know, sitting in the warehouse waiting to go back to the Department of Defense. So, if we obtain additional testing, we will certainly distribute that to the community.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Quickly, I think you mentioned that the Omicron cases, they were being managed. Is that treatment? How are they, they're being managed? And if you might also address how Delta is being managed with people that are reporting with it now?
Yeah, the, these were managed conservatively in the outpatient setting, so none of those folks were admitted that, at least in the initial reports on Omicron. Management of folks with the virus, in some cases, there are oral agents that are given. Most commonly now, we're giving monoclonal antibody therapy to these folks, which is available as an infusion, and then there are some that can also be given as an injection.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Commissioner Coulson?
Given the data and the time factors that we've, we've gone now wearing masks, I would like to make a motion that we change the county policy to make masks voluntary instead of mandatory.
I will second that.
Motion's been properly moved and seconded. Madam Clerk?
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
No.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McGloughorn?
No.
Commissioner Nonnelly?
No.
Commissioner Ward?
No.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
No.
Commissioner Ann Floyd-Huggins?
No.
Motion fails 6 to 3.
Does anyone else have any comments for Dr. Silverneal? Hearing none, Dr. Silverneal, thank you for your presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Floyd?
Right, and I was asked to key yours up for you.
Thank you for allowing me to come tonight and give an update on COVID. So, you'll hear some of the similar kind of information we just talked about as we So, first off, I want to just recall some of the latest things that have been going around Biden Health and ECU. You undoubtedly now are fully aware and recognizing our intentions and move forward with Brody School of Medicine and ECU to integrate Biden Health and ECU. And I just want to pause and thank members of this board and committee. Janice, your great help during the last quite a few years that we have been trying to move toward this state that really advances healthcare in eastern North Carolina and fulfills both organizations' missions. Both are focused on the health and well-being of eastern North Carolina as its primary objective, training primary care physicians and healthcare workers for the future, and we can do that better together, integrated fully, so we can fully support those missions, align them, and consolidate extraneous costs within both organizations that come from having to duplicate things. So, we're excited about where we are. We're excited about where we're headed. You will hear more over the coming months about the effort to integrate. Remind us that in July, we said we would do this. We announced our intention in July. It was November when the board received our joint operating agreement, which is really the foundational documents that define what the ECU health integration is and how that is to be governed. In January, it is effective, and from January forward, we start the process of branding and changing the names and all the nomenclature structures within the organization that, that bring about oneness to the organization, and you'll see more about that coming soon as we complete the, the brand work. We're working with an outside firm that's helping us through the process, Deloitte, and that work is going very well. And it is so incredibly important that we're able to do this today because there are looming challenges in healthcare. Undoubtedly, you see and hear about these across the nation. Beyond COVID, there's a, a national nursing shortage that is profound in hospitals across the country. In fact, Kaiser recently presented information through the American Nurses Association, there will be 1.1 million fewer nurses than are needed in the United States by the year 2030. And so, that is a profound shortage of needed people. Of course, with COVID, all hospitals across the country saw an exodus of nurses from the field, many early retirements. That's not only a local phenomenon, it's a national one, which means eastern North Carolina is competing for nurses across the nation. And we are blessed in that we have ECU, which is the largest nursing school in North Carolina, Pitt Community College, and four other colleges that we work with to train 2,000 learners a year right here at your hospital, because that is an essential driver of our strategy going forward in a very competitive landscape. The physician challenges are similar. We also saw a lot of retirement from physicians over the past couple of years. That all results, capacity constraints result in longer ED weight times, which is also a phenomenon around the country. Certainly, as COVID now has allowed people to get out and about more, we saw people going back into physicians to see their doctors, which is a good thing, but have delayed their care over the past couple of years. And so, now we see a sicker population coming into our hospital, emergency departments, who've really foregone a lot of healthcare over the past couple of years and now showing up with worsening health conditions than would normally be the case. And all of that just leads to a lot of congestion in our hospitals here at Biden Health as they are around the country. And of course, there's a profound lack of rural healthcare funding that I'm sure you're aware of. There are also local solutions that we are working toward. I'm really proud of the team at Biden Health and ECU and what we have been accomplishing together to keep eastern North Carolina safe, as well as help render care to people who need it for a variety, a myriad of problems that you all know are true. That clinical integration is a key strategy that despite COVID, we have been deeply working on, and I'm proud of the advancement that's been made there. Biden Beaufort Hospital in Washington, amid COVID, we've also integrated two hospitals together. That is critical to the funding needs of both. It allows us to operate them as one. That is now a campus of Biden Medical Center. By the way, makes Biden Medical Center the 14th-largest hospital in the United States. So, doing that work allows us to share capacity between the two in a different way, take advantage of governmental funding opportunities that come from consolidating the two hospitals, and will add significant benefit to our health system so that we can keep care local in Washington and invest in that facility there over the coming years as well. The rural residency program I mentioned, just because it's so near and dear to the mission I just talked about of our integrated entity, a few years during the midst of COVID, we also stood up a rural residency program that allows us to train physicians actually in very rural environments. So, in our small community hospitals and clinics, we are training primary care physicians there. Will graduate for a year out of that program. Many of those will likely stay in eastern North Carolina to practice, which is the key reason that we're doing that. And then recently, you've heard news about us trying to become market-compatible. I get asked all the time, how do we compete in an underserved region with a national shortage of healthcare workers? And we do so by making sure we're market-compatible. We are market-competitive, and we've been using our resources to invest and thank our teams who've been with us through these past few difficult years. And then I just want to mention, we recently entertained the joint commission in our organization. So, COVID happens, but all regulatory things continue, all the needed care that we provide continue, and we actually had all of our hospitals surveyed and had our best results from the joint commission survey. So, good things are happening in the midst of COVID, and the organization continues to advance and move forward despite the challenging times. As Dr. Silverneal was talking about COVID, just a couple of numbers to share with you. We've done almost 640,000 tests, PCR tests, one of the state's largest testing sites and, and still a great partner to the state of North Carolina in distribution of testing and vaccines. 184,000 vaccinations have been administered by our health system. These are the state's numbers. You saw this curve in a different form, but it shows all the states relative to North Carolina in the blue here, and you can see how these numbers have trended over time as Dr. Silverneal gave earlier. And this is our statewide total COVID case numbers and what that has looked like over time. So, a good trend overall. And then eastern North Carolina, the percentage of new cases that are coming into eastern North Carolina, and I won't repeat the same thing Dr. Silverneal said. When he talked about per 1,000 population numbers, it is an interesting statistic to look at because we kind of can understand that. What's interesting here is the, the, these curves have switched places between us and the rest of North Carolina. That's a good thing. Our case rate per 1,000 is now less than the North Carolina average. However, I will only remind us that we tend to be behind the state's normal uptick in numbers. So, it's a little premature yet to see, as we saw the rest of the state go up, we fully expect usually a couple of weeks later, we see an increased number behind the state of North Carolina's numbers as well. So, we might see this change just a little bit. Our testing numbers do show an increase in the last couple of days. Testing positive rate has gone from 9% or 10% up to 12% and 13%. So, just a slight increase that we'll, we'll certainly keep our, our eyes on, and then the Pitt County incidence rate. This is what it looks like when you look at the, a little more detail about hospital care. So, this is patients in the ICU and those on ventilators. Again, we've had those extreme curves. We're in a much, much better place at this time with the numbers that we have in our hospitals, and that's a really, really good news story for us. And in the glance here at Biden Health, when you just look as of midnight December, we have about 60 patients in the hospitals. 33 of those are here in the Greenville Hospital, about 10 in critical care, 7 on the, on the ventilators here in Greenville. So, these are profoundly better numbers than we have seen just even a few months ago. And I just want to pause and just thank our teams in those ICUs, those nurses and those doctors who still every day show up doing this really incredibly difficult work, but get incredibly good outcomes for the people of eastern North Carolina. What we don't spend enough time really talking about, these aren't just numbers, these are your friends, your neighbors, your family members who find themselves in very difficult situations, and the team there has really learned how to take care of a COVID patient incredibly well, and we get really good results in, in how we help people survive the COVID. The, the realities of capacity constraint coming from shortage of team members, which leads to less beds than we need, long numbers of patients coming into emergency departments that are requiring more hospital beds than normal, which is a, a significant increase that we've been seeing. If you couple all that together, it leads to capacity constraint in our hospitals. So, this looks at all of our hospitals at Biden, and you can see obviously Biden Medical Center is the largest by far, and this yellow bar and red bar represent the percentage of the time that we are at our limit of capacity. So, at a yellow, we are reaching our limit. It's where we're getting to a critical stage where we have to make some maneuvers to try to create more capacity, and you can see that 83% of the time, that's where the hospital here in Greenville is, near its capacity limit. And the red number shows when we've really reached that limit and we have to not take new patients into the hospital from outside the region or outside of Greenville, North Carolina, and begin to dial back down procedures and things that we need to do. That's a scary number, but it is much better than it has been even over the past couple of months. This, these graphs show where we have been in October and September, and I just call your attention to say that we are seeing a significant improvement in our capacity constraint. That will lead to more rapid care in places like emergency departments over time, as we have hundreds of nurses that we've been training and getting off orientation. In addition to these numbers in a more favorable direction, I think we'll see better throughput in our hospitals, which I know our public needs. And then lastly, vaccination, we spent some time talking about that with Dr. Silverneal. I, I get asked the question a lot because of federal mandates to ensure healthcare workers are vaccinated. I'm very proud of our team and where we ultimately have ended up as of today. 99.8% of our team members are all vaccinated and meet the federal requirements for vaccinated status. And so, we're in a good place, and that has been a very difficult time, but something, again, that our team members come through for and do, do the right thing for eastern North Carolina so that we can be here to serve, and I'm very appreciative of them and what they have accomplished. So, I'll stop here and not be more redundant with COVID and ask if there are any questions that I can answer for you.
Mr. Chair, I have one.
Commissioner Coulson?
I'm interested in the emergency room that you talked about and how it's been a problem. Well, it's always been a problem for any number of years. Probably a year and a half ago, I had to take somebody to the hospital, and we were 116, that is firmly in my mind, in line in the emergency room, 116. And what, what really seems to be bothering me now is that on Arlington in the corner that goes into the emergency room, I don't know what that street number is, but you used to have, and I'll call it for lack of a better word, an emergency department clearinghouse. Well, it's closed now. Why is it closed if you've got such a problem here?
Yeah, I appreciate the question, a great question. You were referring to a part of the hospital we called Med Direct, which was a minor emergency department.
Yeah, I had to have 13 stitches or 14 stitches above my eye. I went in there, hour, I was out of there. I hate to have to go there now.
Yes, sir. So, the minor emergency department existed due to about 30 to 40,000 patients a year that would come to the emergency department and need a similar low-level care, usually even lower than what you're talking about needing stitches. Many of these were headaches or sore throats or all kinds of things like that that come to the hospital. And so, about 35,000 is how many would go a year. We had a Med Direct to take care of that population, and then if they needed more care than that, we would have to actually put And then if they needed more care than that, we would have to actually put them in an ambulance and bring them up to the main emergency department, which we did a fair amount of. But because of that high number, 30,000, we kept the Med Direct open to kind of keep them off-site as you experienced. What we've seen since COVID is about, only about 80% of the volume that comes to the emergency department is actually coming to the emergency department compared to those days prior to COVID. So what's different is that we don't have those low-level patients like that coming to the emergency department. We still have several hundred a day that come into the ED. But of them, most of them don't meet the requirements of minor emergency department care, as was the case back when we had Med Direct open. And so it's because of that that we don't have that in operation today. The need is simply not there, and it's easier for us to take care of more patients with less nurses, less physicians in the main ED, because most of them actually need to be there anyway. Now, if the volume ever returns to a place where there is sufficient need for us to have an off-site facility like that, we are watching that to see where that heads. But at this point, we're still running about 80% of the pre-COVID volume. And so what's missing out of that volume is just that low-level population.
So if I went in there to the emergency room today, what number would I be? Would I be 116 or would it be something less than that?
Well, obviously, that depends on what time of day you're in.
Give me an average number. I'll take an average.
If you were the first one, you'd be one, and then you would be somewhere in the order of 300 or 400 by the end of a day.
Well, then, I can't imagine how your argument that you don't need that other service when you're telling me it could be that bad during periods of that time of the day.
And that has to do with the acuity level. So the issue is, again, that's the emergency department care, not like an urgent care center. And so if the patient needed an X-ray or needed certain imaging or testing, we can't do that at Med Direct, never could. So the low-risk patient populations simply aren't in those numbers I'm talking about. These are almost all very high-risk patient populations that we would have to, if we had the Med Direct open, we'd have to put them in an ambulance and bring most of those up to the main ED, which would slow us down even more than we are.
Would it or would they not have even gone there to begin with?
I'm sorry?
Would it or would they not have even gone there to begin with? They would have gone straight to the emergency room.
Well, that's what would happen today if they came.
I understand that, but I'm saying if that other facility was open and somebody thinks that they're really having a serious problem, they aren't going to stop in the corner, they're going straight to the emergency room.
That's correct. And that's why we don't have it open, because most of what we're dealing with actually have to be at the main ED. We don't have that 30,000 low-risk patient populations coming today. Now, that may change, but that's just where the numbers are today.
Commissioner Huggins.
I don't have a question, but I want to applaud your team and to thank you, you and your team for the fine work that you are doing, have been doing, and will continue to do, I hope.
Thank you, ma'am. I'm very proud of them. It's been a very difficult time, there's no doubt. And we are an imperfect organization filled with people reacting and dealing with the severity of illness of Eastern North Carolina and COVID and all those things as well. But I am very proud of what they have achieved and that they stay diligent for the needs of our people here in Eastern North Carolina. So thank you on their behalf.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams, did you have a comment?
My comment has to do with the fact that your staff has a high rate of vaccination and not leaving it. Whatever you've done to make that happen, it surely is a difference from the national news. And whatever you've done to make that happen, I think that's great on your administration.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? No? Mr. Floyd, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now moving on to the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2020, 31st consecutive year. Mr. Barnett?
Good evening, Mr. Chair and the Board of Commissioners. It's kind of weird to have an audit report on 2021 and to then turn around later and report out that our 2020 audit is our 31st consecutive year of receiving the GFOA achievement in financial reporting, excellence in financial reporting for the 2020 year. So they've been a little behind due to COVID, but the audit itself was completed on time, and we're so happy to receive this. In order to receive this award, government must publish an easy, easily readable and efficiently organized comprehensive annual financial report. This must satisfy both general accepted accounting principles and legal requirements. This is a certification that the county annually tries to receive, and this is the highest form of local government reporting that's available. So I'm proud to announce that we have done it again for our 31st consecutive year.
Thank you very much, Mr. Barnett.
Congratulations.
Let's talk about your other awards.
Yeah, we actually reduced three documents, and this is the second one, or you might want to call it our third one actually, but this is our annual, our popular annual financial report. This is our sixth year in a row of receiving the award from the GFOA, the same group. And this is also for the fiscal year of 2020. This is the most highest level when it comes to popular annual reporting that you can achieve. And a government unit must publish a popular annual financial report whose content is conform to program standards of creativity, presentation, understandability, and reader appeal. Pitt County is elected to utilize the path for not only for simple concise presentation of our financial information, but also to report to our citizens the results of our performance measurements. Again, this is our sixth one, and we're happy to receive this one. We've submitted our budget for 2021. We are what the GFOA calls a triple crown winner, so we hope that we will be back for years shortly to present that we have received that award as well.
Thank you, Brian. We look forward to hearing from you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure, but I think we need to have a motion to accept these awards. And we seem to get them a lot, and there are a lot of them, but they're not that easy to get. They really are not. So it really is quite an accomplishment. So I make a motion that we accept the awards.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved improperly second. Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yep.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
It's now official. Mr. Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and congratulations. Tonight, we'd just like to present you an update on or report on our proposed update for our land use plan. And you may know this is pretty much what we bring before you each time with a recommendation for rezonings or any changes to our development regulations. So just as a reminder, we've had a land use plan in place here even before we had countywide zoning back in 1990, and we've had two major updates. The second one there actually pretty much coincided with our countywide zoning, and then we've had another subsequent update to that. Since that time, two fast-growing areas, as you're very much aware of, the Southwest Bypass, which was a new transportation corridor in our area, as well as the NC43 South Corridor, where there's a lot of new development going on there. We've actually done some small area land use plans there. Those will be incorporated into our plan, and we've already brought it into our 2011 plan. We'll certainly want to incorporate major components of both those plans as we move forward with the update. This is not just something that we'd like to have as a state statute, as we've talked about in the past. 160D is our new code that we go by, we live by as planners, and it actually requires that local governments have a current land use plan in place. And in turn, ours is about 10 years old, actually turned 10 years old yesterday. And in turn, we feel like that's about time for us to look comprehensively around the county at this update. So where are we in the process? We've already sent out our request. We have gone through an interview process, not only with staff, but we've brought in people from the Metropolitan Planning Organization, as well as the NC DOT, to select Stewart Incorporated. And in turn, we should be starting this process very early next year. A lot of things have to come together, formation of a steering committee, a lot of stakeholders involved. We also have some working groups, depending on whether we're looking at farmland preservation or some other type of hot topic here in our local area. All this goes on into a large document that pretty much sets the goals and objectives for our growth here in the community, and that's what we continually bring back before you with any changes, such as rezonings or any of our changes to our plans or regulations. So down to the money, what we'll be bringing before you probably at your next meeting, so we can get started on this in early next year, this money's already been budgeted in our current planning department budget for this year, along with, we've been working closely with the Metropolitan Planning Organization to ensure we've got about a third of the funds that will come through them as a reimbursement at the end of the process. Certainly, transportation will be a vital component of our land use plan update. So with that, this is just to put you on notice, probably at your next meeting, you'll see a contract come through, and we hope to be working very closely with you over the next coming 12 months to update our land use plan. So, Mr. Chairman, that's just our report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Now for the manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Have one thing to report, and that'd be for the calendar year 2021, December 20th, your six o'clock meeting will be your final, last, and concluding meeting of the calendar year. And it'll be a regular meeting with in-person remote capability. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. This time, I'll entertain a motion for items. It's been moved improperly second. Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Corley.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. Happy to be in front of you this evening to talk about a couple of contracts here. The first one is for lawn care and maintenance services for the county facilities. We recently released RFQ for the service contracts. We advertise those in the data reflector and on our website as required. We received two RFQs, one from WAC Incorporated and one from Little's Nursery. And after an interview process and discussions with both those contractors, we've decided to continue the two proposal method of our lawn care service, meaning the first proposal, which we proposed to go to WAC for $193,860 a year, is the main campus here, as well as the campus north of the river and the downtown area. And Little's Nursery, at a cost of $117,981, would be responsible for our convenience sites, the transfer station, and the Warren Farm. We met with them to discuss the expectations. We're certain that they can provide a level of service that the county needs. It's a three-year contract with the ability to renew for an additional three years after that three-year term. I believe those contracts were included in the agenda item, and tonight we asked for approval of these two contracts with WAC and Little's Nursery.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the contract with WAC and Little's Nursery.
Second.
It's been moved properly second. Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Corley, you're up again.
Yes, this is the contract for HVAC maintenance and repair with Piedmont Service Group. We did the same process as we did for the lawn care. We released RFQ. We had it advertised in the data reflector and on our website. Again, we received two RFQs, and after an interview process and meeting with both contractors which submitted, we selected Piedmont Service Group, who currently does our HVAC maintenance and repair. The cost of those after negotiations would be year one of $299,412, year two $308,394, and year three $317,645. Again, we're satisfied with the work they've been doing with the county and feel they can continue to do so. This will be a three-year contract with the ability to renew for an additional three years after that three-year period. I believe, again, the contracts were included in your package, and so I'm asking for approval of the pricing based on a three-year contract with Piedmont Service Group.
This time, we'll entertain any motions. Move approval.
I second it.
It's been properly moved and second. Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now moving on to the budget amendment for Lake Glenwood.
Yes, so this is, we talked about this at our November 15th meeting. This is the Lake Glenwood study and budget amendment that you approved moving forward with. This is the official approval for that, to look at the feasibility of Lake Glenwood, the engineering and feasibility study for that area. So this is the budget amendment, which will provide the $20,000 out of contingency, as well as the official approval of the study. So we're asking for your approval tonight for those items.
Motion to approve.
Where did you say this was? This resource center?
This is the study for Lake Glenwood that we discussed at our last meeting, feasibility of a county facility, recreation facility.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
No.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to two.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, seven to two. Sorry. Added another person.
Mr. Barnett, looks like you're up again.
Yeah. Good evening again. Tonight, I bring forth you a budget amendment to use our contingency funding to fund the $13,200 that you all have approved of the Community Resource Center. This money was originally intended to come from our ARP fundings, but as you know, back in October, we decided to take the pause to get our public input. I will take a second to add a plug that we have done eight of our 10 public input sessions. We have our last two tomorrow. We have one in the morning, 10 to 12 via Zoom, and in the afternoon from 6 to 8 at the Farmville Public Library. I want to thank the folks at Community School and Recreation and the town of Grimsland. They hosted our last two events. But I will entertain a budget amendment to move forward with this funding.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved improperly second. Madam Clerk.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett. Mr. Elliott.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, board members, you have before you for calendar year 2022, a proposed board meeting calendar as well as a budget calendar for the preparation of the fiscal year 2223 budget.
This time entertain a motion.
I second that we accept it.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Now moving on to the rules of procedure, Mr. Elliott.
Yes. So before you have the rules of procedure, as you're aware, this was distributed to the board prior to this meeting, asking for any input regarding any possible amendments, changes to your adopted rules of procedure. One of your activities you do the first meeting in December is to affirm and/or adopt or to change the rules of procedure. There were some minor edits that we did, as staff did make to them. One was referencing virtual meetings under a state of emergency as declared by the governor. The meeting times were changed to have two morning meetings rather than the one morning and one, I'm sorry, two night meetings rather than one morning and one night and posting special meeting notices. The rules had in there a notice would be in the courthouse downtown. We now have it be here on, within and on the Pitt County Office Building. So those were just a few of the examples of staff-initiated changes. But otherwise, if the board is good with that, we'd need a motion to affirm the rules of procedure with the suggested edits.
Entertain such a motion. Motion to approve rules as modified. It's been moved and second. Madam Court.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
Yes.
Commissioner McGlawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
No.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Motion passes eight to one.
Thank you. If we can now address the appointments to the Pitt County Human Relations Commission?
Yes, sir. You have two recommendations on there. One is for the town of Grimsland, they're recommending Mr. Theodore Bowles to be appointed and also for the town of Falkland, Mayor Ginger Little.
Motion to approve.
Second it.
It's been moved and properly second. Madam Court.
Chairman Fitzpatrick?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Albright?
Yes.
Commissioner Coulson?
No.
Commissioner McGlawhorn?
Yes.
Commissioner Nunley?
Yes.
Commissioner Ward?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
No.
Commissioner Perkins-Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner Floyd Huggins?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to two.
Thank you. Now moving on to Commissioner comments, starting with Commissioner Ward.
No comments.
Commissioner White.
I just want to thank Brian Barnett and the rest of our finance staff.[1615.23]